Should we vote on the amendment and then they speak on it as amended? Or?
So, um, they can speak. If you would like to speak to the amendment, since you signed in, you may speak to the amendment.
About what?
The amendment is they're changing the 1.8 mills to 1.68, which is their original millage rate right now. So, you're welcome to speak.
Yes, sir. You can speak. Yeah, it's a little chilly in here. My knees are clattering myself.
And I do thank you so much for, uh, dropping it down again. And, uh, what I want to say is something that will help you in the future, uh, when tax issues do come up. And, uh, I just, I just want to say, let's get back to the basics. You know, uh, and I know as you get in office, you lose sight of the basics. And, uh, in every, in every career, whether it's a parent or whatever it is. And I just want to encourage you to stick to the basics because that's what works. And the first of the basics is work with the money that we have. Every one of us has to do that. There's no one that, that, when we take a cut, that, that we can just grab money somewhere. We have to work with what we have. And there's cuts that we have to make. And, look, if you take away, uh, the, uh, cable from the kids, they're gonna, they're gonna cry and complain. There's nothing you can do right that you have to cut that everybody's gonna be happy with. Uh, but you have to make some tough decisions and work with what you have. And, um, that's how it's always been. That's what we have to do. Every one of us has to take the money that's coming in, and if it's not enough, if something happens and, and we get angry, then we have to prioritize. We have to say, we have to cut this back and, and we can't do this anymore. A lot of people hadn't been going out to eat. A lot of people may have had to cancel cable, whatever it might be. But if we can just get to the basics and always remember that, that we, we only have so much money coming in, we have to make everything work with the budget that we have. And, uh, that would be a, a, a great thing. You know, we, uh, we, we didn't choose to close our businesses and to cut hours in our state. The, the, the government mandated that on us. And I don't want to see people punished because that's what raising a tax on their homes would be. It, it would be a punishment, um, because the money isn't coming in to pay for everything. And now we have to pay for it. We have to come up with more money. Um, and, and it, it, if, if you want to have people happy with you and have a breath of fresh air for people to say, "Oh, I'm so glad," then say, like you just did, "I'm so glad." When people hear that, there's gonna be shouting. There's gonna be, uh, because we have to write that check. It's not like a payroll check where the money's never in our hands. When December comes around and we send a check to the, to the, for the property tax, it comes out of our checking account. We see exactly what we're paying. And so, uh, think about, you know, the, the, the people that are struggling and trying to make it. And then also, remember why we came into office and remember the reason we came. To make it better, to make it a better place, to, to, to put less burden on the people, to try to relieve some of the burden that they had, to, to, you saw problems that other people had that sitting in chairs that you're sitting in. And you said, "I can do better. I can make Lafayette a better place. I can, uh, we can cut some, uh, so the budget down, we can, uh, uh, cut the tax down, we can do whatever we can to make it better and make it where the people aren't bearing the burden. We can lift the burdens up." Because that's what, that's what we're here for. You're, you're elected to office to, to represent the people and do the best you can to make their burden the lightest, to keep them free, to keep them where their taxes are the least possible that they could ever be, to have the least infringement on their, uh, on their freedom. And we're counting on y'all to look out for us. We, we, we're looking to you. We don't have a say in it, except through you. And so, we can get away and start playing politics and, you know, trying to be like somebody else and, and have favor with someone else and forget the basics of why we came. We came here for the people and to represent them and, and to, and to make it the best city. And you came to this office. You told, you told grandpa, "Grandpa, I'm, I'm, I'm running for council and, and, uh, Mom and Daddy." And, and, and they were excited. But if you'd have told them, "I'm, I'm gonna put more burden on people, I'm gonna raise taxes," just think of grandpa and that fixed income, he wouldn't have been too happy. And so, that, we're, we're all counting on y'all to be able to keep us free, to keep us where our taxes are the least that we, we have to pay and, and to represent what we, what we want in our community. Because it's what you want, the same thing. Thank you so much.
Thank you, sir. Next speaker.
Next speaker is Joan Beduzzi. Uh, Ms. Beduzzi, you may begin speaking. And what the original proposal was 1.8 mills, but the council has proposed to change it to a lower amount of 1.68. You may begin your comments.
I suggest that y'all do everything in your power to keep our taxes low and not raise them higher. I'm just really tired of everyone sticking it to the property owners every time they need more money, rather than tightening their belts and cutting non-essential services instead. Our roads are still in poor condition. Flooding is still happening. I'm a Realtor, I have properties all over the parish. Uh, just a few days ago, right after the storm, there was flooding yet again on Schuman Metairie. And in addition to that, there was also raw sewage pouring into the ditches, which still was happening the day after. That shouldn't be. That tells me that the system is in poor condition and not able to handle all the extra work that it's having to do with all the extra construction that's taking place along Ambassador Caffrey. That being that large apartment complex, as well as the Avanti senior, uh, development. Uh, you just can't build something like that without also increasing the infrastructure. Uh, y'all just need to plan things and think a little bit better. Use your head before just raise it. Every time you need money, just raise taxes. There's, there's other solutions, and I would like to see y'all find them.
That concludes your comments, Ms. Beduzzi.
For this, as well as the, um, we also talking about the LITA. This is the LITA.
This is the LITA, yes ma'am.
Yes. Because I just think over 426,000 a year is excessive, and I see no reason why Greg Othrow can't tighten his belt just like everybody else is expected to do. And I guess I would like to see what, a breakdown of everything he does to justify that kind of salary. I would like to see a report on it provided on the website. I don't know if that's available, but I suggest y'all make it available. If y'all coming to us for money every time somebody needs to raise. That's all I have to say.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Is that the final speaker?
No, sir.
Okay. I just wanted to say for clarification, we are, he is reducing and going back to the normal. So, uh, in regards to that, um, he has cut the budget by $260,000.
Next speaker is Candace Schreiber. Uh, Ms. Schreiber, you may begin speaking, and this is on the LITA resolution, the millage.
Hi, thank you for letting me speak. So, I agree with the first caller, the previous before me, about, um, not agreeing to the LITA, uh, the LITA tax increase, which I know that Greg Othrow called and said even at the 1.6. And I do appreciate that, and I do jiddle her also. I would like to see, um, something on the website that says exactly what he does for the $299,000 a year salary. Um, and I just want to thank our council, Kevin Nakah. I really appreciate you, Kevin. And, um, I know there are other taxes that are on the board to be increased, and instead of being called every time, I just thought maybe I can talk, speak now on all of them. Um, I don't want any more tax increases like everyone else in the parish. I'm sure they don't want either. However, there are things that I do know that we need in the parish. Um, I don't know if the tax increases should be, or I really, I, I know it doesn't need to be just on the property owners. Um, I think we're all tired of taking that burden. And in the parish itself, there's several properties that aren't even, um, they don't qualify for property taxes. So, I'm not sure if that's the way to go unless we get to a point where maybe the home set addition, um, you know, the 75,000 is, is not taken out of everyone's property taxes and everyone pays, um, taxes. I'm not sure what kind of resolution we can come up with, but, um, I think that's something we should look at, to make it fair across the board that everyone in the parish is paying taxes for our services, including fire. And, um, I also think whenever Kevin, I know for the, the fire tax that was defined last year for the voters, from the voters, um, one of the main reasons was the water supply. And I know that no one on the council has called Lafayette Parish District North, Waterworks North, to talk to them about engineering, um, a new line, you know, to have all of the fire hydr, the fire hydrants in the neighborhoods working as a fire hydrant, because I know they're not just laid in the ground that way. And I think that that's something that we, we need to look at to assess that problem.
Thank you.
Ms. Schreiber?
Yes.
Uh, so you want to pass? You said that you wanted to make your millage comment, so you want to pass on the other items that you signed in for? Or do you?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
I just, yeah.
Okay.
I'll just, um, leave it to where, I don't want any of those taxes passed. I think that there's another resolution we can come up with. And I just want to thank, um, our city parish council, um, Josh Gilery as our mayor president. And I want to thank, um, our city Lafayette Parish Police Department, our Sheriff's Department, and I believe all of our community, um, you know, God bless all of our community is what I want to say.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, Mr. Chair?
Yes, ma'am.
Citizen who did not wish to speak, uh, three signed in in support of the ordinance and 76 signed in in opposition to the ordinance. I mean, resolution, I'm sorry.
Resolution, right. Cool. And, and Ms. Schreiber that called in, thank you very much for, for your comments and your concerns. And one, one thing I will say that Water District, uh, North, uh, did receive a big federal grant, and they are looking to expand new water lines in unincorporated areas with the hopes that they can provide a, uh, instead of a two-inch line, but maybe a six-inch line, where we can potentially start having fire hydrants that can actually be used to put out fires in an unincorporated area. As it stands today, we are relying on 20, 22-year-old, almost 25-year-old water tanker trucks in which a fire broke out, and one of the municipalities, who's a volunteer fire department for our area, went to trank, uh, went to, uh, cranked the truck, and it didn't even work. And then we had to pull sources in. So, we do know that water supply in unincorporated areas is a big, big deal. And, uh, we are trying, uh, very hard to get Water District North and South in those areas to provide, uh, a bigger water line. And, and quite frankly, development is coming to the unincorporated area as we speak. It's, it's gonna continue to happen. And as we get more and more homes and residents, uh, one of the things that the gentleman said, getting back to basics, is infrastructure, roads, bridges, drainage. Without those, you have no development in unincorporated area, and you have no ways of getting fire protection. So, I thank you for your comments, and, uh, when we get to that other ordinance, I have a presentation to, to show the public exactly where we at, how we got where we at, what's the consequences, and exactly what would be the cost if it should go up for one year. So, um, this ordinance here, again, is just for LITA, and it's to go from 1.8 back down to the original of 1.68. Okay? Uh, please call the vote.
District one? District two?
Oh.
On the, no.
No, we gotta call the vote for the amendment. All right, this is for the vote on the amendment. It was offered by Councilman Taber and seconded by Councilman Rubin. We're voting on the amendment first.
District one?
Yes.
District two?
Yes.
District three?
Yes.
District four? District five?
Yes.
The motion to amend is approved.
Okay, now we will go ahead and call the vote for the resolution as amended.
District two?
Yes.
District three?
Yes.
District five?
Yes.
District one? The motion to adopt as amended is approved.
All right. And this time we'll move to ordinances for final adoption. This is a public hearing, and any speaker, uh, has ability to, to fill out a form, uh, wishing to address the council. If you do so, there's a five-minute rule that applies. Cindy, can you please read the ordinance?
Parish ordinance 36, 2020, in accordance of the Lafayette Parish Council, amending the fiscal year 1920 capital budget of the Lafayette City Parish Consolidated Government by budgeting the Parish-wide Parks and Recreation Project, money and fund 276 to various park, parish park projects within the Department of Parks and Recreation.
Need a motion and a second. Motion by Councilman Carlson, seconded by Councilman A.B. Rubin. Council discussion. I will go ahead and just inform everyone that this was an effort by the parish council to, uh, allow the city of Lafayette to use up to $200,000 to keep those rec centers open. And, uh, what, oh, there's the next one. This one is the allocating to the parish parks, okay. I misread. So, anyway, what this one does, so I can talk on the right one, is that this is the funds that we were able to rededicate from the library that went to Parks and Rec for parish parks. So, this, the money here goes to the outside parish parks of Scott Park, uh, Carron Crowe Park, Judy's Park, Doucet, and Picard. And I can tell you, uh, myself and this council and this administration, and Sidra and I have been working diligently with these communities and municipalities to, uh, with the capital improvement that we make in return, they take over the maintenance, they take over the, the expenses, and they keep up the parish parks. So, that way, potentially, this parish council is no longer involved in Parks and Recreation, and it truly becomes 100% on the city of Lafayette, where they can control the rec centers and they can control their, their, uh, parks within the city of Lafayette. So, uh, we recognize as a parish council that we don't have the funds to maintain those facilities. It's not even proposed in the upcoming future budget for any money at those parks. So, uh, we work in diligently, diligently with these communities and those mayors to, uh, try to get the parish parks self-sufficient on their own, and we feel they're probably in the better hands of those municipalities that have organizations like SATS and SWA, and, uh, they can really do a better job with those parks and the fact that, uh, uh, they can turn it into something very special, and it would relieve us of some, uh, some costs and some expenses. So, that's what this is about here, and, uh, we look forward to, to supporting this. Any, any comment?
Five ci, five citizens who did not wish to speak signed in to support the ordinance.
Okay. Can you please call for the vote?
District three?
Yes.
District five?
Yes.
District one?
Yes.
District two?
Yes.
The motion to adopt is approved.
Parish ordinance 37, 2020, in accordance of the Lafayette Parish Council authorizing the LCG Chief Financial Officer to utilize a portion of the Fund 276 balance to reimburse Fund 201 for the reasonable operation and maintenance costs associated with certain recreational facilities in Lafayette Parish.
Okay, motion and a second, please. Motion by Carlson, seconded by Councilman A.B. Rubin. All right, now this is the right one I was talking about. So, um, this one was the, the effort of this parish council to work with the city of Lafayette when the rec centers, uh, were first being closed down and the 37 employees, uh, not being employed. The parish council and I felt like, uh, we wanted to, to lend a hand, even though we really don't have any money to lend. But for, fortunately, we were in a position that we had $200,000 of money to offer the city of Lafayette, uh, and out of this Fund 276, giving them the authorization to use up to $200,000, no more, but definitely if they wanted to use less, it's up to them. And they could use it for the rec centers and/or staffing those rec centers with the appropriate personnel. It's my understanding, unless the city council comes back to us, we may have to repeal this because from what I'm gathering, they are not interested or perhaps found another solution to keep the rec centers and those employees. So, therefore, they might not, they might not need this money, but I just want to reflect that the parish council is working with the city council, and we're trying to do the right thing. If it doesn't happen, then we'll be more than glad to take our $200,000 back so we can use it for other operations. So, uh, but that's what this ordinance is. And again, this does not go through final unless the city of Lafayette adopts the same ordinance. They have to introduce it, they have to finalize it on their own. The parish is gonna adopt it and finalize it tonight, but it has no merit unless the city of Lafayette council accepts it. Okay? And no more discuss, uh, council discussion?
Four, four citizens who did not wish to speak signed in to support the ordinance and one signed in in opposition.
Okay, and I don't have any council discussion. Please call the vote.
District five?
Yes.
District one?
Yes.
District two?
Yes.
District three?
Yes.
The motion to adopt is approved.
Parish ordinance 38, 2020, in accordance of the Lafayette Parish Council, amending the fiscal year 1920 operating budget of the Lafayette City Parish Consolidated Government to adjust amounts for administrative and general costs to actual.
Okay. Need a motion and a second to consider. Motion by Councilman Taber, seconded by Councilman Carlson. Any council discussion on this matter? Seeing none. Ms. Williams, any comment?
No, sir.
Please call for the vote.
District one?
Yes.
District two?
Yes.
District three?
Yes.
District five? The motion to adopt is approved.
And on it, parish ordinance 39, 2020, in accordance of the Lafayette Parish Council setting forth and designating the avalorum tax millage rates and imposing taxes on all properties subject to avalorum taxation in the parish of Lafayette and authorizing the assessor and tax collector for the parish of Lafayette to assess and collect property taxes for 2020. Be ordained by the Lafayette Parish Council that whereas the Lafayette Parish Council is the governing and taxing authority of the parish of Lafayette and is empowered by law to levy and impose avalorum taxes on all properties subject to taxation in said parish as shown by the assessment role for the year 2020. And whereas the Lafayette City Parish Consolidated Government will include the revenues from those taxes in its budget for fiscal year 2020, 2021. And whereas the Lafayette Parish Council desires, desires to establish the millage rate of the avalorum tax levied for the purpose of paying the principal and interest on general obligation bonds for the parish of Lafayette. And whereas the Lafayette Parish Council is required by the terms of Louisiana Revised Statutes 47, 1705 dot A, to adopt an ordinance which sets forth and designates the avalorum tax, tax millage rates for the current tax year. And whereas the Lafayette Parish Assessor has completed the 2020 reassessment of taxable properties of, in the parish of Lafayette. And whereas, based on the outcome of the reassessment, there are decreases in net taxable values in Lafayette Parish. Now, therefore, be it further ordained by the Lafayette Parish Council that Section 1, all the afro-described whereas causes are adopted as part of this ordinance. Section 2, that the following millage rates are hereby levied on the 2020 tax roll on all properties subject to taxation by the Lafayette, by the parish of Lafayette. Exempted municipalities, 1.625 mills. General alimony, 3.25 mills. Roads and bridges, 4.47 mills. Drainage district, 3.58 mills. Detention and correctional facility, 2.21 mills. Library, 2017, 2026, 3.12 mills. Courthouse complex, 2.51 mills. Juvenile detention, 1.25 mills. General obligation bonds, 2.00 mills. Library, 2013, 2022, 1.97 mills. Combined health unit drainage create, 3.81 mills. See right down below. Combine public health, 2.36 mills. Stormwater management, 1.18 mills. Cultural economy, 0.27 mills. Section 3, the proper administrative officers of the la, parish of Lafayette State of Louisiana, be and they are hereby empowered, authorized, and directed to spread said taxes as herein above set forth upon the assessment role of said parish for the year 2020, and to make the collection of the taxes imposed for and on behalf of the taxing authority according to law, and that the taxes herein levied shall become a permanent lien and privilege on all properties subject to taxation as herein set forth, and collection thereof shall be enforceable in the manner provided by law. Section 4, the foregoing ordinance was read and full, the role was called, and on the adoption thereof, and the ordinance was adopted by the following votes. Section 5, all ordinances and resolutions or parts thereof in conflict herewith or hereby repealed. Section 6, the ordinance shall become effective upon signature of the Lafayette Mayor President the elapsed of 10 days after receipt of the Lafayette Mayor President without signature or veto, or upon an override of veto, whichever occurs first.
Okay. Need a motion and a second to consider. Motion by Councilman A., uh, Taber, seconded by Councilman A.B. Rubin. Okay, council discussion. Um, I want to make it clear, um, on the money with the parks, I don't want to be no confusion. The money came from the rededication of the library millage to Parks and Recreation when we had, um, repealed some of the, uh, rededicated some money from the library, I think it was $8 million going to drainage, and the other 2 million was going to Parks and Recreation for parish-wide parks. So, in case someone says, "Well, Mr. Nakah and the council, you, you found the money to give to these parish parks, but you don't have the money for your, your, it's apples and oranges." That money was rededicated, and it could only be used in Parks and Recreation. Could not be used for drainage, could not be used for roads. It had to be moved over and be put into place for Parks and Recreation. So, that previous ordinance that you, you talked about, the 550,000 going here and going there, that was all rededicated money from the library to Parks and Recreation to be spent in the parish parks, but not for your basic needs of roads, bridges, and drainage. Just to clarify that, because somebody had notified, how did we have money for that? So, now that I cleared that up, um, I have a presentation that I would like to educate everyone here. I'm very bothered by this situation. Um, I don't like this situation at all. Um, I don't like taxes like you don't like taxes, contrary. Um, I just, I'm kind of disturbed about it, be, be honest with you. It's not a fun position to be in. We have so many things going on, and this is no way in shape or form of this parish council trying to pass something through a crisis. We had no indication of how the assessments were gonna be. We just got the assessments maybe a week, two weeks ago. So, I, I want to present the facts so that people can understand, what do you mean the parish doesn't have any revenue? For example, the sales tax revenue that the parish took in, and that's the unincorporated area, okay? When I say the parish, that's not Scott, Doucet, Youngsville, Carron Crowe, that's just, the parish's sales tax was about 4.5 million. The town of Youngsville was 10 million. The city of Lafayette took in 80 million. The key component here this evening in the presentation is the parish, this council, we all live in the parish. Whether you live in a municipality, or you live in the city of Lafayette, or you live in an unincorporated area, we all live in the parish. What that means is we all share the expense of the courthouse, the jail, drainage, roads, bridges, library, airport, and so forth and so on. What is happening to the parish is not wasteful spending. We are only able to operate within those millages and the sales tax revenue that we bring in. One would say, "Can you please explain to me how the millage is working? I'm gonna show you." I also understand that maybe it's, it might be confusing to you, so I'm, I'm gonna try to make sure that we, we, we break it down. And I have the tax assessor here to clarify if I'm wrong, or he can help, uh, with the presentation. But annexation is a big part of why the parish general fund is depleting and is at $50,000 today. is depleting and is at $50,000 today. The city of Lafayette general fund is $33 million. So some say, well, if you're getting annexed, why are you still picking up the, why you still have to pay these bills? Shouldn't the city of Lafayette or Scott pick up the bill for the courthouse? This just doesn't work that way. So at this time, Joseph, can, can you pull up? And Mr. Conrad, come over to the tax assessor, can you come up so we can present this and, and, and show?
Do you, do you want the annexation one up first?
Yes, yes. Yes. Being I'm talking about annexations and, and this is not to criticize the city of Lafayette or, or, or hurt the municipalities, because they didn't break any law. By law, you can annex. So they didn't do anything wrong, but how did we get in the position of only having $50,000? Hopefully everybody can see that screen. So when a business comes into the unincorporated area that generates revenue, what typically happens is that closest municipality next to it wants to annex it for the sales tax revenue that it brings in and the property tax to that community. Well, what happens to the unincorporated general fund when that happens? You lose parish general fund money because you're losing the parish general alimony tax. Millage, that millage is set at 3.05. You know what the original millage was? Four mils. In 1976, it was four mils. As Lafayette's economy boomed and got out of the eighties, the property values started climbing. So those councils rolled it down because we didn't need as much money at that time. The parish was whole, we had general fund money, we were good. Well, now that the millages has rolled down to 3.05 and more annexation has taken place, this is what happens. As you will see, the parish in one year, just in 2019, due to annexation since 1995, we lost 454,000,821. The most annexation was done by the city of Lafayette, followed by Youngsville, followed by Broussard, very little in Carron Crowe and Scott and zero in Dussault. And one would say, well, explain to me how that affected it. Well, if you get annexed, you no longer pay the parish 3.05 mils to the general fund. You now only pay 1.52 and then the parish loses the other half, just about half of it. Now that's not including the one penny sales tax that then is also stripped away from the parish. And then at the end of the year and every month, we have to pay the parish milli, we have to pay the expenses of the parish. So I hope you understand that that's what this slide is showing you. The parish lost 454,000 just in general fund money. 454,000 might not be a lot to the city of Lafayette because they got 33 million. 454,000 is back in the day when your, your grandparents used to buy a loaf of bread for 30 cents and today what we pay for bread? I mean, I, I'm just giving you an analogy that we live in 2020 expenses to run a courthouse, a jailhouse, employees, drainage, roads and bridges. And we got $50,000 in the general fund and we lost 454,000 that could help subsidize those areas that were weakened. It's not those municipalities' fault, but that's exactly where we got here. That's a lot of money. Next slide. Conrad, any comments? Am I off base?
You said it right.
Okay. If you know me in the audience or you know me, whether you like me or you're not, I'm going to present you with the facts. And it bothers me to present this because the majority, including myself, would think, well, why is the, there's no way the parish is broke. Look at this, look how it's, it's, it's the fact. So Mr. Conrad, can you go over just the ones that affect the parish in regards to what the original rate was set at?
The, if you look at this chart, Conrad Komolafit Parish Assessor, if you look at this chart, the first one up there is the general alimony that we've been talking about. And it's currently set at 3.05 mils. You can find that all the way on the far right-hand side of the page. What's on highlighted at the top is four mils. This millage is a constitutional millage. That means it was put in place by the constitution adoption in 19, mid 1970s. Same goes for the second millage. The way that, that those two work in tandem and it says exempted municipalities has to be or should be half, can be no more than half of what the general alimony is. So as Kevin said earlier, when something gets annexed into one of the municipalities, the millage gets cut in half. And the reason for that is because when this was passed, it was assumed that those municipalities would take over the maintenance of roads. And so they would have their own taxes to pay for the road maintenance within those cities and the parish wouldn't have to, would no longer take care of those roads. So that's why it's, it was set at half. Then you go down to the airport. And by the way, those two are not voted on periodically as most of the other millages are. So what has happened in the past is we've gotten down from four to 3.05 because councils of the past failed to roll them forward to continue bringing that four mils through the years. And what the constitution goes on to say is that if you don't roll forward, now this, that's not what we're doing this year. But in a, in normal year, that's been happening in the past 30 years, normal reassessment year, when the millages, when the, uh, total value goes up, you have to roll your millage down, but you can roll it back up to the prior year maximum. That would have kept it at the four mils. But because councils of past didn't roll forward within that four-year period of the next reassessment, you lose that maximum. Well, it's one thing on a 10-year millage that gets voted on every 10 years. But on this one, these two that are constitutional, when you lose them, you lose them. Unless you get in the situation we're in this year, which you're well aware of. Let's go down to the airport. The first highlight is 1.71. That's what it was voted on by the people. It's a 10-year millage. You can see that in the second column that's highlighted. The third one says when it was first levied, that's 2013, and then when it expires, 2022. You go down to the next one, the library is not being collected. The next one, the courthouse complex was voted on at 2.34, 10 years in 2018. It started, ends in 2027. The health unit is one that is no longer collected. Library, and I'm not going to go through each one of these because you can read them. It's 2.91, that's what was voted on, 10 years and when they started. And so you can go on down and see all the rest of them. I will say that the law enforcement, one of them is a legislative. If you look in that second column, that one letter says V L C. The V is voted on, L is legislative, C is constitutional. So like your first two millages, Cs were Cs, constitutional. The, I have a millage that's legislatively set. Law enforcement has one that's legislat, legislatively set and Lida has one that was, uh, uh, set. You see the Lida one is not voted on again either.
Correct.
It was set by the legislature. Okay?
Right. So what, what he's showing is certain millages were set at this rate and some of them today are, are lower than what they used to be. And now, why am I saying this? Is because I'm going to bring you to the next slide so that you understand what's in front of us and what the, what, what do we, what happens if we don't do this and what happens if we do do this? And I appreciate this slide more. Well, this is, this, this is not really, that's Lafayette. So yeah, go to the next. Nope. Here we go. I don't know, it's small. Can you get it bigger, Joseph, a TV in front of you? Okay. So on the far left-hand column, you will notice all of the millages rates that were set in 2019, okay? So for example, the parish alimony was 3.05. Okay? Well, just like we talked about, what I'm getting at and, and I'll go over in detail here shortly, but Conrad, can you speak to the assessments and, and explain what we're up against as a parish council? And then I will go in and explain if it doesn't pass, where the cuts are coming from and how much it is. So keep in mind, we lost 454,000 in the general fund. And what's before us is state legislation that gives the council the ability to adjust the millages so that we can collect the same amount of revenue as we did last year, which is basically to get us at standard quote, to break even like we did last year. What the problem is, is we're going through a budget right now that we have to adopt. The parish has to adopt a budget. The city of Lafayette has to adopt their budget and then we got to come together as one and approve the whole budget. Well, the problem is the assessments for the first time since the early eighties came in at 6% less. Now, it didn't affect the commercial side, but it affected the residents. And in some years when it affected the re, the what I want to say, I just lost it. The bal, the balances. So if it, if, if commercials not affected, the residents feel it. If the residents are affected, then the commercial feels it. It, it goes back and forth. So what's in front of us basically says, you either adjust these millages. If you don't, you lose another 3.9 million dollars. 454 general fund, 3.9 million dollars. Where you lose it at? You lose it in the general alimony, the general fund. You lose it in the courthouse complex at negative 364,000. You lose it in juvenile detention, 182. You lose it in the correctional facility, 320. How about this one? Who needs drainage in the parish? Regardless if the hurricane came or not, who needs drainage? We fight for drainage, we get requests for drainage, we need drainage in this parish. If it doesn't happen tonight, 519,000 less in drainage. Mr. Bernard, I'm still trying to clean your area where you're at. You think I can do it with 519,000 less? Probably not. Roads and bridges, we got to have roads to get to a place, you got to have bridges to cross over the Cooley's, right? 648,000 would be less. Thank you, Joseph, for pointing it out. Roads and highways and, and bonds, 311,000. The mosquito control. Okay? The combined health would be minus 500 and something thousand. We just had a COVID-19 in this council, just did an emergency orders, ordinance to make sure that Dr. Stefanski and her team had what they needed to take care of the people in the parish if they came down with COVID. If another pandemic hit. That's important, I would think. Then the library, the library would lose 452,000. And I know some of you say, well, the library has too much fund balance already. But they just built some new libraries and if they don't have operational money, then they're already down a million right now, so they would, they would get hurt again. And then you possibly have a brand new library in Scott, Louisiana on Apollo Road and they'd have to shut the doors. And then the, then the town of Scott would even have to buy the library, but they're not going to buy the library. So then you have an eyesore, you know? And, and we can agree to disagree. Some people may say, I'm not worried about the library. But I would ask yourself, what are the most requests of services that come through this council office? Veronica, you still have that?
Uh, in a four-year period, there were 8,000, in excess of 8,000 drainage requests for services. And that's citizens who call in throughout, you know, daily or call their council members for assistance with drainage. And for the roads, like potholes or roadside maintenance or whatnot. There were 11,000 for a total in a four-year period of 20,000.
Okay. The gentleman that was here earlier said how we should, as a government, get back to the basics. As you can see, the parish has no fluff. We are strictly operating on these millages. And what's, what's disturbing is potentially, we could be paying taxes and have no services. What's in front of us gives us the opportunity to collect at least what we made last year. Not to bring it home to bank, not to break the bank and, 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 and have a surplus. It's just for us to be able to operate at the same place as we did last year. That's what it's doing. And someone would say, well, if the, and, and I need to make it clear, this parish council is only talking about these millages. I have no control, we have no control over the school board, no control over the sheriff. We only have control over what we deal with every day. In the far right column, when you add up all the negatives, if we do not support the adjusted rates, 3.9 million dollars has to be cut. Well, what, what services, I mean, how bad would it be, Mr. Nakane? What's going to happen? Mayor President, the 19 positions that you added in drainage, they gone. Fire protection in an unincorporated area, because it's not mandated. CA, CFO, Toop said, you're not obligated to pay the parish for fire protection. Potential courthouse closed. You only got 300,000 in the balance right now, if the three and a half million gets approved to fix and open the parking garage. 648,000 less in road and bridge projects. 519,000 less in drainage. 364 less in the courthouse, 320 less in the jail. The list goes on and on. You're also talking about laying people off. Because the proposed budget that we were given through the parish was no 20% cuts. There is no possible, I've asked for solutions and there is no solution to fix a 3.9 million dollar cut. You can't cut it out of a paper bag. The city of Lafayette is fortunate. They bring in 80 million dollars of sales tax revenue. They have a bank account of 33 million in reserve. So the, the science museum and all of these things that you're talking about, keep them open. They have, they have a piggy bank to go and grab it. Do you think this, these parish guys right here, if we had a piggy bank of 33 million dollars, we'd be talking about adjusting the millages? No. We would make do with our general fund until we can come up with a long-term solution. We don't have those revenues. We can't go into the piggy bank and say, let's take 3.9 million and fix the deficit. There's, and ain't there. I have brought this solution to numerous people. Oh, we'll figure a way. We'll find a way. There is no way unless as a community, we want to go ahead and implode from the inside out. And I guess that's what this disturbs me and that's what's hard to make this decision because people are going to say, Kevin, you're raising my rate of taxes by seven and a half percent. The rate may be seven and a half percent, but the cost is not seven and a half percent. People are thinking, oh, you're going to raise my total cost of my property taxes by seven and a half percent. No, the rate is seven and a half percent. You know what your cost is? Look up on the screen if you can get it, Joseph, if, please. In the unincorporated areas, if your home is valued at 275 before homestead exemption, your cost is 34 dollars and 60 cents a year. Not a month, a year. That is for us to continue to have drainage projects in these districts, continue to improve the roads, fill potholes, continue to have a courthouse. And all of these things is something we all share in the parish, no matter where you live. You gotta have a courthouse. You gotta have a jail. You gotta have roads. You gotta have bridges. $34.60. If your house is valued at 375, 51 bucks. That is just the parish side. Go ahead.
The numbers you are quoting don't include the airport and Leda millages.
Correct.
Which is different than what's being shown.
Well, Leda's gonna be the same.
What's being shown is...
Okay.
Is different. That's why people might be confused by what you're saying versus what they're seeing.
Oh, I got a different one. Okay, I'm sorry. $39.40. I got the wrong one right here. $39.40, but that's not correct, because we're not gonna be doing the Leda, so you're probably closer to the 37... $38 for the year. So, I would ask the community, is the $39 or $37 worth it versus the opposite? Less drainage, less roads, you're paying taxes and getting no services. It's quite disturbing. But on the flip side, the facts need to be remained that this is only for us to bring in the same amount of money as last year. The state legislation allows us to do this without the vote of the people. And someone will say, well, why are you not doing it and bringing it out for the vote of the people? It's because we have a budget deadline of September 17th. We just got the assessments, and there is no way this council could get to the bonds and commission and put it on the ballot in time for us to adopt a budget. You cannot adopt a budget with $3.9 million less. You have to cut it, or you have to at least adjust the millage just so that you are sure you bring in the same amount of money. And just for the record, if you wanted to put anything on the ballot, you have to get it in by November 16th to put it on for March of 2021. So, this parish is back, council's back up against the wall. Would I have liked to give it to the voters and let them vote to adjust it? Yes. That's the principle. That's the right thing to do. But unfortunately, we're not in that situation that we can do that. So, it's a tough decision to be on a parish council. I think everyone ran, knew the parish council at some point was gonna have to do something long-term. And I will state for the record, the long-term solution is not to keep going after the property owners. It is to be shared amongst this parish, because we all use the same services. Mr. Conrad, what happens should this pass? And the mayor president says, I'm gonna go ahead and veto this. Do these millages get set back to zero, or do they remain in the original form without the adjustment?
If the ordinance passes, as is with the millages, adjust it upward to that column you see up there, 2020 maximum millage level, and it is vetoed, then the millage amounts would be zero at that point. If the council overrides the veto, then the millages would be set at the maximum. If the council fails to override the veto, then the millages will all be zero.
Tell me what that means.
That means that if you go down that column, second from the left-hand side, I should say, right-hand side, the millage rate, revenue at millage rate, keep going to the right, to the right, that column, right there.
Which one?
That one right there. There are the green pointers on. That is the amount of money. That is the amount of money that will not be brought in. Not be brought in. All of that will not be brought in, because... And people say, well, why is that? The council has to adopt a millage so that the sheriff knows what to... I know what to assess on the tax rule, and then the sheriff knows what to collect, and the LUS knows what to collect in the city for city millages. That's the only way we know. If... An example of that is the city of Broussard. The city of Broussard has a millage, property tax millage. But they don't vote on it, because they made an agreement with the citizens that if they approved a sales tax, they wouldn't impose the property tax. But they do, in fact, have a property tax millage. They just don't vote on it. Well, in effect, if it's not overridden, then everything gets set to zero until I have something saying that, okay, we're gonna set this millage at this. We're gonna set that millage at that, and that millage at that. Which means, if you don't override the veto, then you have to introduce another ordinance.
And go back to the voters?
No.
No? Okay.
Introduce another ordinance, wait another two weeks. Think about the timing of all this. What ends up happening because of the staging of these meetings is that when that happens, if it occurs in that sequence, then there's the potential for pushing the tax rules late, and the tax bills don't go out till sometime in December. Well, you say, well, what's the big deal there? Number one, taxpayers are going to be getting those bills just before Christmas. But also, every taxing body that is waiting on that revenue to come in in December, you have now pushed that revenue into January. And if they're short of funds, they're gonna have to go to the bond commission to get revenue anticipation bonds, costing the taxpayers even more in interest. So, it pushes the timeline back for everything that I do from here forward. So, I just want everybody to be aware of that, that is potential based on the scenario I just gave you.
The numbers I'm calculating, and they could be wrong. Councilman Carlson shared this with me. If they're all set to zero, you're talking about a $60 million loss.
Oh, it's huge. It's huge. Yes.
Then you're really talking...
Bankruptcy.
Right there. No, no, I mean...
Literally, I don't know how else you would do it.
I don't know how you can fix a $3.9 million loss, more or less a $60 million loss. I mean...
I don't know.
Again, I wish we were not in this position. It bothers me. I hate this, because it puts me in a difficult spot. Because people are gonna look at it and say, you raised my rates higher than what I approved in certain areas, and I didn't get to vote on it. But then the other part of it is, I don't have any time to bring it to a vote. We have to make a decision. If we don't make a decision, we're faced with cutting $3.9 million, or you're faced with, if it happens to get vetoed and you don't override the veto, you're setting the millages all at zero. Then you're trying to adopt a budget. Then you have the CFO having to come to us to figure this out. I assure you, if we can... If we can not go through that, and we can somehow have the taxpayers understand the situation we're in, I think we can all agree that we need roads, bridges, and drainage. But... And look, if it happens to get vetoed, I would just simply ask that administration come the next day with a $3.9 million cut, or show me the 60 million. That would be my request, because... I don't know. Maybe it's just me, but I think the $37, $36 for one year is worth it until we can come together with a long-term solution. Any other comments, Mr. Conrad? Any other things that I'm missing, any other points? And fellow council members, please chime in if there's something that you want to say. Did I cover everything?
I think you covered it.
Okay. Hit the button. Councilman Tiber. Oh, hold on one second. You got the floor, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just want a great, great presentation. Thank you, Conrad. You know, I consider myself a conservative man. I consider myself, and I ran on conservative, being a conservative, and I am a conservative. But as a businessman, I also look at this as what you've given up for... $39, if you use that number, on a household of 275,000. What are you giving up in return for the 30... You know, and I understand, $35 is a dollar. I mean, in this time, yeah, it's hard. It's hard on me. It's hard on everybody. And it's a hard decision, you know? When I got into this position, I saw, parish, it's gonna be easy. We ain't got no money. We got the... You know, we'll goodbye some kind of way, and we get hit with this. And, you know, is it worth $39? And I'm gonna use the storm for example. You had the storm come, and a tree fell on the weekend, and I'm just making a hypothetical. It fell on the weekend, and it fell across the road, and you call one of us. We can't move... We don't have any money for overtime. We can't get nobody... You're gonna have to wait till Monday to get that tree removed. So, is it worth $39 for you? And I'm, again, hypothetical, and it goes to potholes, anything else. You know, we can't fix the pothole until we get... You got one pothole. We got... We got four potholes before we go out and fix it. Because you're gonna have cuts. You see, you heard the numbers. We're gonna have those cuts. So, you know, it's a hard decision, but in light of what you just told us, you know, it's... What we're gonna do, we're just gonna make it worse for us. It's gonna cost us more in the long run. Again, you know, $39 versus what you're gonna... As a businessman, I always look at the return on investment. And it's more what you're gonna lose than what you're gonna gain. So, with that, you know, I just want to say that.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Mayor President, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Como.
Yes, sir.
You come with such great news tonight.
I just come with the facts.
I know. And that's what I wanted to say. You know, you do come with the facts, and I think the chair, to your credit, for many, many months, you have been speaking about facts. They're gloomy facts, but I don't think...
They're ugly facts. I hate them.
They are. And, you know, now, today, really, to me, at the 11th hour, I'm not blaming you. The 11th hour, I'm briefed on my options. So, I just, and I was in the back, and I apologize for this, and I think you said, I just want to make sure we clarify. If I veto this, the millages are down to zero.
Correct.
Wow. So, my choices are, by law, veto it, zero, or don't veto something that I fundamentally disagree with. And again, my fundamental disagreement, I'm not saying you're a bad person. You're just giving facts. I'm not saying any council members up here, if however you vote, I know you guys. I know there's a lot of thought in this. It's gonna be made in good faith, no matter how you fall in this argument. My fundamental problem is, we are raising rates. We are raising taxes, not to all, is my understanding, but to some people, without asking permission. That was my fundamental argument against the taxing districts, is if you want to take money out of the pockets of taxpayers, just give them the courtesy of asking. That's my position. But I'll tell you, we are in a very... If you share in that belief that I have, what are these options? You didn't make the law. That's just the law. That's my understanding. So, if this passes, it's also my understanding, I have 10 days to get some solid legal advice on some options, and we may ask your thoughts on that, too, if there are any other options. But wow, you guys have a heck of a decision on your hands. I will tell you that. Because what you're saying is not unreasonable. I will concede that. I fundamentally disagree with the vote to do this. But what you're saying is, I will concede, is not unreasonable. So, we need to change the law. We need to change. But thank you. And you come to our council meetings quite often. You're always professional. You always give us facts. We do appreciate that.
Well, and let me state on that, the reason the Constitution was written the way it was was to help local governments in situations just like this, where the economy, one reason or another, falters, and the assessments go down. And then you're faced with what you're faced with now. We were faced with it in 1986 with almost a 26% drop. 26% drop in the assessed values. 1987, it was half a percent. 1988, it was almost 20%, another 20% drop in a matter of three years. Those were tough times. If you think this decision is tough, those were tough. In fact, the person who had to lay off the people works for you. Robert Benoit had to lay off the people back then. It was a tough, tough decision.
Conrad, you know, a lot of people say, well, what do you mean the assessment went down 6%? How did you come up with 6%? Because my taxes have always gone up, and it's a great question. Just to be clarified on how assessment's working, and how did your department come up with that? That way, people know exactly how it came about.
Sure. What happened this year, as everyone knows with this virus, certain industries were hit extremely hard. But this has been building up for quite a few years with oil and gas. And this year, it hit the bottom. Oil and gas companies have been pulling assets out of here, pulling inventories out of here. Retail companies have been pulling inventories out of here. I went to the mall, to Macy's. They closed the top floor. Closed the top floor. Can you imagine how much dollar inventory was sucked out of the parish? Then I went to the first... Well, when I was on the first floor, I looked around at the inventory. It was probably a quarter of what was normally there in the past. That's a lot of money that is taken out of the parish. Pennies, same story. Top floor closed. And let's go on and on. Joseph S. Bank, A. Banks is closing.
So, all of those affect the assessment?
Sears closed. I mean, all those drops add up after a while.
So, is that when commercial drops, it puts the burden on the residents?
That's exactly what happened. Residential, on the other hand, has stayed steady, and in fact, was up this year in total value. Commercial, not so. Not so. So, unfortunately, there wasn't enough. In the last few years, I was sweating that we were gonna be negative. I mean, we just skimmed by with 1% increase or something small, but that's because residential kept propping up commercial. This year, there wasn't enough prop. That's why you end up with a 6.6% decline in the total valuations. Now, what happens is, it's kind of a shift, a cost shift from commercial to residential. But then when commercial turns around and picks up, that cost shift goes back onto commercial, where they pick up a little bit more of the burden than residential. It just so happens this year, residential's picking up a slight increase in the burden.
Okay. Well, thank you. I appreciate it, and, you know, it's always great when the transparency happens and the community sees exactly the shape and the situation we're in. It's not bluff. It's not fluff. It's not the parish overspending. You see how the parish has disappeared. You see where the revenue's going. We don't have Sam's and Walmart in unincorporated areas. You know, so it's... Hopefully, the public understands the outcome and what we're up against. And if it should pass, please give this council some appreciation for holding the parish whole and give us time. And if this thing happens to go down again, I think you will see the parish council find a long-term solution that does not affect property owners. So, we ask for your forgiveness, because we don't know any better. When we took this job, no one told us we were gonna be up against the wall. And if we didn't pass it, the millage turned to zero, and you lose $60 million. So, I mean, we're in a situation that is not fun. So, thank you for your time. We're gonna move on. Because I know Councilman AB, you might have to... You good? All right. Thank you. Thank you, Conrad. Appreciate it. I'm not seeing anything else from the council. Mayor President.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And again, Mr. Como, you may know this. I know you're about to sit down. Would there be any harm to just deferring this two weeks? I believe the city council was discussing that. Do you know of any harm of that?
Okay. There's no harm in doing it.
There's no harm in doing it as long as, and on September 15th, what gets adopted gets signed. The harm is, if we get to September 15th, and there hasn't been an agreement, and this council passes something that then gets vetoed, then we've got problems.
We, we would need a budget amendment? Would that be the?
No.
No.
No, you need, you need a whole nother ordinance, ordinance introduced.
Yeah, no joke, huh?
We need a printing money machine, we don't have that.
You'd have to introduce another ordinance, wait two weeks to finally adopt, we're in October at that point. And, and then now you're pushing the tax bills.
Hold on, you got to hit, hit the button.
Thank you.
Couldn't it be an emergency ordinance? And then not drag it out two weeks?
Well, that, that, no, it has to be two weeks. Layover done it for ordinances?
Yes, for...
It's millages, so you want to, you want to follow the rules on these millages.
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
I mean, you could.
I, I just feel personally, you, you, you have the facts, you're going to kick the can for two weeks. We, we, we have a budget that we have to adopt, and we, we have to know where we at. And to be in limbo, I, I, that's just me, I'm, I'm, I'm not as supportive of, of deferring it. The city of Lafayette can defer it because they have money. They have the money in the, in the piggy bank, they have the general fund. We don't, we don't have time to play around with, with people's services, uh, because that's where it's going to be affected, services, salaries, personnel, uh... You know, unless the city would like to go ahead and loan us, and they want to pick up the tab for the remainder, but I mean, I don't think that's going to happen. Councilman Gill, I mean...
No, you're good. No, Mr. Chair, and, and, and I agree with that. If, if the facts are the facts, and that's it, and then these are the only options, then I would agree, deferring it would, would cause more harm, there's no, there's no point in that. My thought process was...
Only if, only if agreement can be reached. If agreement can be reached in those two weeks to do something with the millages, and it gets passed and signed, okay, I can live with the 15th of September. If, on the other hand, you don't reach agreement, it gets vetoed, then we got problems.
That, and, and that's, and I'm glad you said it, and that was my mindset. I'm literally finding this, this legal advice the 11th hour. I mean, you should have seen that today, we went from, this can be a resol, this should be, this should be a resolution, to, oh wait, I don't think it can be a resolution, oh may it can be a resolution, you have options, and now it's, no, it has to be an ordinance because of the constitution. The state constitution says the taxing authority is governed by the charter, in, in this incident, the charter says this must be governed by the ordinance, therefore, we're in, back in this discussion. I mean, this is the discussion we had today, as, as recent as today. So my point in all that was, if, like Mr. Como said, if there is another option, that, that was the intent by me asking about the, uh, deferral. Okay. I do appreciate it. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Any comments from the public?
Yes, sir, we do. Susan Holliday. And she will be followed by Adrian Fontenot.
Hey, guys. I'm Susan Holliday, I'm the CEO for the Realtor Association of Acadiana. I wanted to come here tonight and tell you, our association is here for really two purposes. One is that we proudly represent the 1,600 Realtor members that we serve annually. Two is that we feel that we are the defenders of private property rights, and we feel strongly that we have a duty to every property owner in Lafayette, in the parish, in the other parishes that we represent. I had more prepared remarks, and I have to say, Mr. Nakian, I thought that your slides were great. I think that you brought a wealth of information that I know that myself and my leaders have been asking for, okay, before tonight. I still need to say that I think that the speed of which this has all happened is too fast. I mean, the ordinance was introduced two weeks ago, we've had one and a half hurricanes, we've had some other things happen in our city where we have not been able to get a grasp on this. And while I appreciate everything you've said tonight, I would like a copy of the slides if I could, so that we could take it back and digest that. I think that you gave us a lot of good information tonight, but it is also nine o'clock, and, it's been a long day. And so I'm still going to ask, and we've talked to every one of y'all about a deferment, and I'm not sure about the legalities of that, but I still think that that is something that should be considered. You talked about how you wish you could take it to the voters. Obviously, that's not an option, or, or you're not choosing to use that option. Give us the time to go back, digest this information, see these figures that you put up on the screen, and try to come back with a workable solution if we can. So I am going to ask all of you and I, uh, for the deferment. I do also want to say this, that, um, you know, this was the first time that I've really been involved in this process, and I can tell you that I have the utmost respect for all of y'all. The time that y'all gave us in talking to us about the issue is greatly appreciated. I feel like I, each one of y'all works hard and are passionate about what you do. Please know that I'm passionate about what I do too, and I try to represent my members in the best possible way, and we all want the same goal. We want a great Lafayette, I want a great parish, I want us to be the envy of, of every other city in the state. So please know that we want to work with you, and I appreciate your consideration. Thank you.
Thank you so much, and would love to work with you guys on a long-term solution. Yes, and if anybody in the audience or anybody watching would like a copy of the information, please call 291-8802, that's my council office, and, uh, my lovely staff and Council Clerk, Ms. Williams, would be more than glad to, uh, get you that information, uh, and hand it out, so.
And I have some copies here tonight. Next speaker is Adrian Fontenot, followed by Bill LeBlanc.
Good evening, council members. Uh, my name is Audrey Anne Fontenot, and I am the CEO of the Acadian Home Builders Association.